Good evening, I'd like to call the King George County Board of Supervisors to order. It is now 5:30. Before we get started, I would like to welcome Mr. Matthew Smolnick, our new county administrator, who's been here for two days and has been drinking from the fire hose since he started. Welcome, sir. If Ms. Bender could lead us in the invocation and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance right after that.
Everybody please rise. Please, Lord, may, give us wisdom to make the right decisions for all the residents of the county and for all the citizens that are on the Service Authority. Amen.
Amen. Are there any amendments to the King George Board of Supervisor agenda or the King George Service Authority's agenda? Seeing none, we'll next go to public comment. Public comment will be, comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please provide your full name and date when you're submitting your public comment so it can be properly included in the public record. So I'll first go off the list, and we have Reverend Davis.
I had to get you at four o'clock to sign to get there first. But anyway, I'm Pastor Davis, Tabernacle Baptist Church. I vote in the Dogland District and been a county president for the past forty-seven or so years. I'm here to encourage you tonight from the word of God. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that. Bible says in Psalm, chapter 24, but it's Psalm 24. The Lord is, the Lord, the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and they that dwell therein. The earth is the Lord's. I know we have stops with driving ground and survey and all that, and we have to do that, of course. But before you survey the property you live on, somebody else surveyed it before you lived there, before you did. Own that property before you did, and somebody owned that property before they did, and somebody owned that property before they did. When you're gone, somebody else will move into that area. But one of these days, the Lord says it's His, and He's gonna come back and He will be the one that rules over all the earth. The Bible says that by Him all things consist, otherwise He holds everything together. Wasn't for God holding things together, it wouldn't stay together. And so the earth is, He founded it, He established it, He created it, and He sustains it. Verse two says, "For He hath founded it upon the seas and established it upon the floods. Who shall ascend into hills of the hill of the Lord? Who shall stand in His holy place? He that hath clean hands and a pure heart, who hath not lifted up his soul unto vanity, nor sworn deceitfully." He shall receive the blessings from the Lord and the righteous, from righteousness of God, of His salvation. The Lord tells us that the salvation is of the Lord. He saves us, He sustains us, He seals us, He satisfies us, and of course, He sanctifies us, sets us apart. And all that's done by the grace of God. We're saved by grace, for by grace you are saved through faith, not none of yourselves. And of course, if you have a song in your heart tonight, I asked Brother Sullins, Mr. Sullins, he had a song in his heart. He said, "Always," you remember when, you know, God puts a song in our heart. I appreciate what the Lord does. Do you remember when you was a young person going to school, Sunday school, and you had, you learned all those songs in Sunday school? You remember doing that, and you memorized them and you sang them? I find a lot of children, they don't know those songs, songs that were blessed in the heart. You remember that song where you hold your finger up like this? Remember that song? "This little heart, this little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine." You remember that? "This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine, let it shine, let it shine all the time. Let it shine in a courthouse, amen. Let it shine, let it shine in a schoolhouse, amen. Let it shine, let it shine in a White House, hallelujah. I'm looking forward to that one day. But the Lord is good, and Lord is good all the time. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the blessing of being here. God bless you. Have a good evening."
Thank you, Reverend Davis. Reverend Shaw.
James Shaw, James Madison District, columnist, Northern Next Sentinel. The hat is back, historian. History is a great teacher. It can be the hard teacher or the easy one. We keep the bad memories around because we don't want to repeat those mistakes, but instead, learn from them to make a better future. These monuments remind us of how far we have come. For example, we remember and celebrate the successes, the sixty million dollar grant, the Service Authority that almost expired but was saved by quick human intervention. So, dear Board of Supervisors, keep making a bunch of mistakes so that you can overcome them with an even better and more successful outcome. A history lesson from Elon Musk. Remember, failure is always one step closer to success.
Ms. Riley?
Hi, I want to thank you all for being here and giving us a chance to talk. I'm Kim Riley, James Monroe District. I just really appreciate the fact that you're taking time and pausing to think about the Amazon project because I really do believe there's a lot that we need to discover, especially the effects it may have on the Rappahannock, which seems to be our one long-lasting water supply. And we know that water is definitely our main source of life, and so we want to protect it, just like the good pastor had said in the Bible, we're to be stewards of the earth and to take care of it and to manage it well. You know, where are we gonna be five years, ten years, twenty years from now? I mean, people that I'm talking to now in my neighborhood, we've all been out of touch with this, and so I'm glad there's a pause so that we can get involved and make a well-informed decision. Things like e-waste, what is it gonna do? When will it come about? How do you deal with it? And also, I'm concerned about the electrical grid. How much more can Northern Next sustain or how much more can we pay for it? So those topics I'd like to learn more about as we go through this process. So thank you for being wise to, you know, help us make a better informed decision. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to speak at this time? Ms. Levell?
I forgot to write my name. Hi, my name is Sandra Maria Lobo. I live in Presidential Heights. I'm not going to talk about the data center tonight because I know you will do the right decisions. But I'm going to say tonight, I want to thank all of you for your service to the community. I want to especially thank Senator Richard Stewart for his service to the country. Before serving as a Commonwealth Attorney in Westmoreland County and as a senator, he served as a youth marine. Since I am a military daughter and most of my family serve in the military, I have a great appreciation and gratitude for the military. I also want to thank Mr. Norman Resavi and Mr. Cathy Bender, who worked so hard for the fixed Service Authority. He tried his best to explain how much the Service Authority debt is, but he still has a lot of problems. But I still, but I still think they should pay more in the principle of the county, of the county and Service Authority debt. So I will, so we will pay less on interest charges. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Going once, going twice. Mr. Dines, is there anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any written correspondence to any members of the Board of the Service Authority? Seeing none, we will close public comment. We will now start with the report of the members of the Board. We'll start off with Lee for his report on the Board of Directors.
I'll make my comments quick. I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Pastor Davis, Pastor Shaw, Ms. Riley, and Ms. Levell, thank you very much. We'll continue to, to work hard for you here in the county, and I think we have some good stuff on the agenda this evening that you'll appreciate. So please stick around and you'll look forward to that. Other than that, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stroud? Mr. Stuart? Do we need to read that verbiage about him being online? Does anybody have that? Is he online?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, he's online, but he says he can't hear. So we're checking on things.
Okay. So maybe somebody can pull that up in the meantime, and we'll go to the next report of the Board. Mr. Sullins?
Thank you, sir. Before I get started, Mr. Dines, you might ask him to check out the YouTube version. Sometimes if I'm away, I listen to the online meeting as well as YouTube at the same time because the volume on YouTube is much better. Okay, my report, first off echoing the thanks to everybody that came out tonight. Thank you all for the comments. Pastor Shaw, the video was amazing. I really liked that. As a systems engineer, the first time I saw that thing land effectively, it brings a tear to the eye. So many moving parts, so many things in that. It's so cool. Thank you for bringing that. Meetings over the last few weeks, had a meeting, online meeting a couple of weeks ago with a group called Wonder School. They want to bring a thing to the county that would provide in-home daycare for our children so that if we have a working mom, single dad, whatever, people that want to go back to work, but they're kind of tied at home because they've got younger children, this would kind of help them out. It would also offer up business opportunities for people that are interested in going into the business. A little bit more to follow on that because there is a startup cost associated with it, so I need to dig in on that. But it would end up being about a startup cost of about twenty-five thousand dollars per individual that's interested in starting this kind of business. But there are potential grants for that, so that's one of the things I need to dig into. Also, I'm working with people from over at the base with NSWC Dogland, talking about innovation in the county. So I've gotten to meet with him along with Mr. Davis at one point and at a previous meeting, just to keep things legal. Him and Mr. Stroud. At some point, I'm looking to try to bring him in so that you guys can hear him speak. But I want to make sure we've got our ducks in a row and get it all cleaned up. Ms. Bender and I were able to go meet with the Kingsword Democrat Group Monday night and chat with them. They had some questions on water, what's going on. So I asked if it was okay if Ms. Bender went because I knew that with her role as the Chairman of the Board and Acting General Manager, that she would be able to speak with a lot greater specificity than I could. She did a great job answering questions there. Also had some discussion on the budget and some stuff about taxes. And then I've also gotten some, some questions about taxes. And Ms. Puckett, I'll see you in the audience. I'll try to hook up with you and Mr. Jones later with what these, what these are and try to help out. It's the usual questions about how are things calculated? So, meeting this week with the King George Republican Group. As I've said before, happy to visit with any group that you've got, even happy to do one-on-ones as long as you don't mind doing breakfast at IHOP on Saturdays because that's usually about the only time I can fit it in. They know me by name there, so. Happy, let's see, what else? FAMPO, Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. So Ms. Bender and I are a part of that. We had a meeting last, I think it was Thursday night, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. The outcome is the more important part of it. So I've been talking to you about the Regional Transit Authority and the potential for bringing one of those up. Again, just a reminder, this is something that the state did not, nobody in the State Senate asked for that this year. Two previous years, they did ask for that. If the, if they go with it next year, there's a decent chance that it could pass, and that would mean that we might be a part of it. As part, at the FAMPO, what we're trying to do is generate a document that would make recommendations, keyword recommendations, on how this thing would be worked out. So our final meeting to develop this recommendation document was, was last week. It would include four sources of revenue, hotel tax for those that are staying in our local hotels, a half a percent increase in sales tax. One of the members was kind of against that, but I actually made the point that, you know, if we do it that way, at least everybody, you know, shares a little bit of the joy, a little bit of the pain. That includes visitors to the county, not just the local people. It would include a gas tax. However, we already have the gas tax, so that would not be anything that we would recognize. One of the recommendations is that gas tax actually comes back to King George. All the counties, all the organizations that are part of this already do a gas tax. With Spotsylvania, Stafford, I'm not sure, I can't remember about Fredericksburg, but the other two definitely, all of their gas tax goes into paying for the VRE. If we opt into this thing and it does, you know, get passed and they, you know, accept our recommendations, that gas tax would come back to King George. So it's about, if I remember the numbers correctly, it's about one, two, one point two million dollars a year. So not a ton of money, but the nice thing about that piece is it actually is something that would be a net positive for us instead of a net negative, at least on that front. The other part I'm not real happy about, and I was outvoted on this one, it's the recordation tax. So basically, if we, if a new home is sold, not a new home, but if a home is sold and changes hands, the documentation of that, there would be a tax assessed with that. My argument with that was, you know, you were against the half a percent sales tax. Well, shoot, that's shared by everybody, but if we're, you know, in favor of the recordation tax, we're basically passing that one down to younger people who are trying to buy homes in a market that stinks right now. We're making an already expensive home market that much more expensive by putting a tax on it. There were some sympathetic looks, but in the end, I lost, and they wanted to include that. There was also discussion of how would the money be split? Would it be fifty-fifty with half of it coming back to the county and half of it going to the authority? What they ultimately came up with, again, I got outvoted on this, but it's seventy-thirty. So thirty percent would come back to the county, seventy percent would go into the authority. And then we talked about membership and representation, and I can't remember those numbers off the top of my head. The good thing is, they're going to turn this around and send it back and let us talk about it and let you guys see what it is. And the even better thing is, the, the recommendation includes an opt-in clause. So by definition, we are out, and we can choose as a county to opt in or not, whether we want to be a part of it or not. There's some discussion of, okay, we're all automatically in and we can choose to opt out. It's kind of six in one, half a dozen in the other, but it's nice that we still, again, if the state goes with this, we get to choose whether we want to be a part of it or not. And I want to make sure that we bring all the positives and negatives before we make that decision. We hear taxes and we automatically go, "No," you know, except some people are like, "Heck yeah, spend them." Let's find out what the real numbers are and what are the real benefits before we make this decision. And so I'll be bringing that back when, when we have it formalized and put on paper for you. Once again, though, just a reminder, that's a recommendation. The RTA hasn't even passed by the state yet, and if it does, the state can still choose to go a different path than what we're recommending, but that's what we're trying to go with so far. And then that's it. Thank you. That went a little bit longer than I intended to.
Thank you. Do we have what we need for, for Mr. Stroud? Do we have the verbiage?
Mr. Chairman, as long as Mr. Stroud notified the chairman yesterday, he's out for either a medical condition or a personal matter, the personal matter has to be disclosed to the board and the public. And the board can allow him to participate electronically according to your bylaws. However, he's got to have a functioning connection in order to do that. Sounds like he might not.
So does he or does he not have a connection?
I think he just tried to speak earlier, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Stroud, can you hear us? Yes, he can hear now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can he, can you hear him?
Can you try to speak, Mr. Stroud, for us? The state is still carrying here.
All right, we'll move on to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, sir. I thank everyone for coming out. I really appreciate it. The things I've done over the past couple of weeks, I did go up to Manassas and I did go tour a data center that was made by a company that, kind of like some of the ones that are looking here to come and do things, just to kind of get an idea of testing, testing. Just to kind of get a, of how those things operate. I'm gonna keep going. Anyone wait for him?
Seems like he can't hear us, Mr. Chairman, but his microphone's working now.
Still in the middle of Mr. Davis's comments. Can you start over?
Sure. So I did get to go tour a data center in Manassas, just to kind of get an idea of the different ways that they're run. And the particular one that I went to, it uses no water at all. I was impressed with a little bit of the things about it because from standing on dirt, standing on ground, within eight months, it was where it was today, which was running and up. It used no water. It used AC units and cooling to, and gel to cool everything in it. I did laugh at them because they had a stack of batteries in the corner, and they're like, "This right here is for the environment." But it was stacked on top of a drum that was as big as these chairs right here, full of diesel fuel. And so I was like, "Oh, that's gonna save the environment. Cool, got it." And they kind of got the joke on that. I was also impressed with this particular company because it tells you some of the things that are being left out when someone wants to be a partner with you. And one of the things that they did in their agreement was any kind of electric, any kind of electrical upgrades, any kind of electrical upgrades to the private system that was in that county, they paid for it themselves. They passed that on, they didn't pass that on to the constituents. It wasn't, didn't, the prices, they paid for all the upgrades to it. Which I thought was, was, was a pretty good gesture. If you're gonna be a partner, it shouldn't be passed on to us. These things do come in here.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and try to do that for about another thirty seconds, and then we're gonna cut that off.
All right. So the second thing is, you know, some things that are coming concern to some of my constituents in Dogland, or, and I feel like there's some things that through the years have just been kind of kicked down the road. When someone sends me an email, my constituents, I take their email because I had the same email from the past people who sat in my seat, and I could look every time they sent an email. So just a slew of emails, I'm getting from people who live on Potomac Drive, the people who live in Bayberry, where when it rains down there, it floods. They have a, basically a pond in their front yard. And when it's a hundred degrees outside and there's a pond in your front yard, that's just mosquitoes and bugs. And it is, it's pathetic that it's gone this long that these people have been crying and reporting these things. And so I gotta reach out to, I've sent these things to VDOT. I'm really not concerned about paving another dirt road in King George. I'm really not worried about that without taking care of problems that have just been around for, we're talking fifteen years. And these people have just been neglected. You wouldn't want a pond in your front yard every time it rained because someone, you know, the ditches are cleaned out or they need to do some sort of repair to it. So I'd really like to see, it's that money that we're, I was on Ashland Mill Road the other day. It was a dirt road my entire life. One of my, my best friend growing up lives on it. And there was never traffic on that road. We rode four-wheelers up and down it to get to the pond. And now, I mean, there's cars, it's paved with that loose kind of gravel pavement, but there's people flying fifty miles an hour down this little tiny road that has a one bridge on it where two cars can't go at the same time. And that's kind of what you get on those back country roads. It gives people an excuse to cut down them and cut through them. And it creates, to me, more traffic. But I'm not, some of the things that we're trying to do to it for the future, I'm really concentrating on the people that are kind of getting left behind. And some of the things that don't follow them, like I went down to Potomac Elementary School, and there's a humongous pothole that's there every year that will swallow your car when you're turning in to the parking lot. It's just there. You know, we have trailers that people gave us that are sitting down that someone donated for classrooms that are now rotted and molded and we can't use them, so we had to go out and get some new ones that are now sitting there because they can't get their permits and stuff, is what they're saying, in order to get those trailers set up. So there's just more important things that we have to start, kind of start looking at. And what I'm trying to say is, there are just people who have lived here a long time who are kind of getting left behind. And there are some problems that we need to take care of that should have been taken care of a long time ago. And I'm really gonna start working with VDOT a little bit on how can we focus that energy on, on things that need to be taken care of as opposed to, you know, changing our traffic patterns to things that we already think are gonna cause a problem and no one wants anyway. So let's do, just see if we get to do some things that we already be getting done, and that's all I got to say.
Mr. Stroud? Your last chance.
He was gonna reconnect to the go-to meeting, Mr. Chairman. I have him on the phone.
All righty. Ms. Bender?
All right. I'm gonna try not to give a very long report because I'll speak a lot during the Service Authority. One, two things I would like to piggyback on my colleagues. For Mr. Sullins on, on the FAMPO discussion and the RTA, one of the things that I've been talking about for a long time is if we, we are part of this RTA, whether our choice or not, is that we have representation on FAMPO because right now, we are a non-voting member, so that's important. So if we are in this RTA, that we be allowed to be a voting member. The other thing is, is to understand that this whole part of an RTA is to fund transportation projects in the smart scale system and give the locales more bang for your buck to be able to, to, to win these awards, to do these huge transportation projects. For doing these smart scale projects, you actually have to have studies that show the impact, and it has to be part of your application. King George doesn't really have one except for the controversial 301 study. So if we were in the RTA to start, we don't have a project. We have a study. And that's always bugged me because, you know, all these other, they have a river crossing in Fredericksburg, something, several projects in Spotsy and Stafford, and we would get a study. So that's one thing I've pointed out that we, you know, if King George, we get, let's say, pushed into it and we, we choose not to be in it and then we're put in it, we need more than a study to be fair and to be equitable, especially when you see the price tags on some of these huge projects to make sure that King George is taken care of and our road needs. So now I'll jump over to something that Mr. Davis had said. So these emails that he's been talking about for years, I, at one point, became the recipient of them because the person knew me on Potomac Drive and reached out to me. And I did look into it, but it, to fix the problem on Potomac Drive, we did a lot of research on who was really the cause of the ditches that overflow. It came back to some culverts, and it's kind of under VDOT's purview. But the price tag was quite large to make the repairs for that culvert, and probably the problem in Bayberry, it's kind of the similar thing. So I don't disagree that, and if we do address, we need to address both of them because the people on Potomac Drive have kind of been left to themselves for a long time. And maybe we do take some focus off some of the other roads with the secondary And maybe we do take some focus off some of the other roads with the secondary money. But the secondary money is hard to come by because it takes a while to build up that fund because quite a few of the the money that funds that is from your tele fees with your phone, with your phone, because so it takes a little bit while to build up that. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. All righty. Mr. Stroud.
Oh, that's now? Yes, I can. Can you hear me talking now?
I can hear you talking and you need to state the reason why you can't be here.
This is Supervisor Stroud. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm dialing in right now remote uh from Business Travel. And I'm having a problem hearing the meeting uh over the computer. So Mr. Dinesh Solis is phoned up and that's where I'm listening on right now. So I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Solins spoke of the Regional Transportation Authority, the RTA. Um, it's basically a taxation on the citizens of King George to be used in other locations where their roads like 95 and um BRE, where we would get 30% of what we already have. So if we're going to tax the hotels, we should uh get 100% of it, not give away 70%. If we're going to do a um increase their recording tax, we should get 100% of that, not 70% of that. So I would be in disagreement to be in in it voluntarily or mandatory. The pothole, Mr. Davis, at Potomac Elementary, has been there for 16 years. It has been fixed 15 times. They've taken all the dirt out of it. Um, I went through there one time uh to an event down there and it came up to my window on my car. That's how deep it was at one time. So they they took all this uh dirt and gravel and everything out of there and supposedly poured it with concrete. And said it will never happen again. But obviously it has happened again. So either it's an underground railroad or I don't know what it is, but something, somebody needs to figure out how to fix it. As far as the projects on drainage, there is a lot of low-lying areas in Bayberry and in Dogren. If we as a board decide to spend some of the the project money on that, then we need to, Mr. Davis, if you could start a list of the locations, so we can all have that. Appreciate it. All righty. Close the reports of the member of the board. The consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Properly seconded. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably second. Any discussion? Stroud, any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing no response on, I'll take that as a no. Um, I do have a couple of questions or comments. So I, when I went through all the numbers, I noticed that we're still paying for that middle school that hadn't been in operation for 15 years, water bill. Um, we also are paying, it says in in the um in the warrants that, I want to make sure that I'm, I reading this correctly, Ms. Cobb, that the Water Authority building, the county's paying the water bill and the electric bill. Is that correct or incorrect?
For the Service Authority building? Let me check that. I don't believe that's correct.
And there seems to be some, some um a lot of expenses that we had talked about in the beginning of year of of, you know, the curb, some of the expenditures. So, Mr. Smalnick, um, if you look through those warrants and those POs, then you'll see them for yourself.
Mr. Collins, I think the one school that you're referencing, I think Mr. Solins brought that up several months ago. And when I spoke to Patty about it, I think it's a steward that requires that you consume its rural development or something where you're under the bond agreement that the individual still has to pay some portion of that bill to get that type.
So a school that hasn't functioned in 15 years, you got to pay a bill on? So if I move out from my house, do I got to pay a bill the rest of my life?
Uh, under a lot of of the bond, especially rural development, uh, the user agreement is even if you do not connect to the system or you disconnect, you have to continue to pay the bill.
Forever?
Well, whoever has connected to that property.
So you see where that's a waste of money. And you'll see some of the other expenditures that I'm very concerned with. I got to uh request the board members to review the expenditures for this meeting. So we had a second. Um, there was proper discussion. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't we have to do it a roll call since we're talking about the approving?
Yep. Start again. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Bender?
Aye.
Mr. Solins?
Aye.
Mr. Stroud? All right, no vote. And yes for me. All right, we'll move on. Approval minutes for 6101.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
All righty, on, is that 610601, 02030405?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Probably second. Is there, is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, is there any discussion, Mr. Stroud? Seeing none? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, Mr. Stroud? No vote. Um, 6107, Constitutional Officers, Ms. Puckett? Anything? Anyone else constitutional? Nope, I don't see anyone. All righty. I'll turn over Ms. Bender.
All right, thank you, Mr. Collins. We will start the Board of Directors uh part of the program. Right now, first up on our uh list is SA 0602. We are going to present the Service Authority budget by Mr. Rasavi, Ms. Cobb, and the floor is yours. And I really appreciate your help in developing this.
Uh, Ms. Cobb and I have worked to to put this budget together. And basically, uh, the large spreadsheet that you have in front of you uh compares the current fiscal year budget uh that we're in and then the proposed budget, which is basically 252,696 dollars more. And uh
Aye.
what seems to be attributable, that is, there's been a significant number of new connections uh of a system. And so it's generating uh more revenue.
Rasavi?
Yes.
Mr. Dines, can you go ahead and cut him off? Go ahead, Mr. Rasavi.
Um, and we reviewed uh one thing that's a little bit different to this budget. We have moved all of the debt to the actual uh Service Authority fund. Rather than in the past, there was a, I guess, what do you call it, a debt service fund? And all the money was being transferred. And after speaking with the auditor, that simply created too much work on behalf of the staff and was unnecessary. So we have moved uh the debt back to the appropriate uh places uh for the Service Authority and the debt is due uh the general fund. Um, one of the things that we're looking at is uh bringing the billing back in-house, which we believe will be a significant savings. I don't know if we have the exact number, but we believe that'll be a significant savings and an improvement upon the service. I've spoke with both the Treasurer and the Service Authority and Levita. And we believe we can make a fairly smooth transition uh to that service. Um, so I don't know if Levita has anything she desires to add or any questions that the board may have regarding this budget.
Mr. Rasavi, before Levita goes, could you uh mention how much muni billing is? It is, it is a hefty uh chunk of change that we are giving to muni billing and
I believe
we heard last night from Mr.
Aye.
when Mr. Solins and I talked with the group we were with, that was a big sticking point.
Yeah, I think it's over 200,000 uh and there were some proposed increases to it. And that's just far too excessive for providing a simplified billing service. So I think we can do that at much less cost and put that revenue to better use on making repairs and doing the things that are necessary.
Head, Ms. Cobb.
So just to piggyback on what we were talking to each other about, bringing utility billing back in-house. Um, in this budget for FY '25, we did include printing and binding and then extra funding for postage so that our staff is ready to take on this initiative and get the bill sent out. Um, and it'd be already in the budget. Um, one thing that I am requesting is a utility billing specialist, so a new position that will be added. Um, it's going to be on the finance staff, but the position will be funded through the Service Authority, split 50/50 between water and sewer. And the total salary plus the benefits will be 67,650 dollars. And that's for the full fiscal year. Our plan is to go ahead and advertise and have this person come in as soon as possible, starting next fiscal year, so that we have time to get them trained, get everything done appropriately, and then um terminate the contract with muni billing and get everything footstoked.
Thank you. Do we have questions? I'll start, I'll just go down the line, Mr. Solins.
No questions.
And this, the budget part is a discussion item to be brought up next meeting. But the billing specialist, we we would like to get a decision tonight so that they can put out, so we can hire somebody and start getting them trained.
I think, Ms. Bender, that uh one of the comments of a lot of the citizens who I've spoke to, either in the hallway or who called me, uh, when they have questions, calling muni billing or trying to get answers, uh, that doesn't seem to work very smoothly. And I know a lot of them call Patty to try to get the answer, but I'm thinking that this process should be a lot smoother with the electronic system that you have in place now, uh, that we can produce these bills and have a lot less of consternation regarding the simple function.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
So I I don't disagree that it should be in-house. And July's coming up for the next fiscal year. Um, but this is a first reading. And so um this board has fa- followed Robert's rules to have a first reading discussion. Second reading um is an action or another reading. So this is just a first reading. I would request it not have a vote tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, do you have questions on the budget?
I just got it.
And I know, I know that and the public was sorry. We worked really hard. They were been working really hard on the regular budget and then switched over to the Service Authority really quickly. And so we just finalized everything this morning. So that's why it came out at the last minute. So this is a discussion. So um, Mr. Solins, did you have? Mr. Davis?
I just, I would concur, Mr. Collins, just because it just creates consistency for us. You know, as far as, you know, this is a discussion item tonight. I know it's imperative to get it started, but the way we get a more chance to kind of look at everything and make it as an action for next time.
Thank you. That's fair. It's just, we were trying to, because there is a timeframe that we do, if we want to cancel the muni billing uh contract, we have a timeframe to do that. Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
If you, I mean, we could always schedule a meeting as long as we get enough public notice for the next meeting if they think it's that imperative. I'd just like a chance to go over it myself.
And that is fair. Ms. Cobb, we can wait to the June meeting, right? Yeah, that's, we were just throwing it. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any further questions. I think uh we we already talked about the muni billing uh cost. And um, Ms. Cobb, you said basically the fully burden rate for the billing specialist was 67K, basically?
Yes.
No, I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure I'm correct.
Thank you. And just to double check before I go to Ms. Collins, Mr. Rasavi and Ms. Cobb, there is no rate increase, correct? And then one other thing that, you know, I honestly discovered, and this has been brought up years and years and years about the landfill and the original agreement from the landfill. The the landfill does pay a portion of the debt. And Ms. Cobb, can you mention that? Because I had it clarified during this process.
Yes, so the landfill pays 85,038 dollars each fiscal year to the Service Authority for their debt. So that's a transfer we do every year.
So yes, they do. So I wanted that out in the public because I just learned the exact amount and that that it was. So thank you. Mr. Collins?
So further down the agenda, it talks about an excavator. Is it in this budget somewhere?
No, it's in the current budget, to make exact position.
The budget that will end?
The current, yes, fiscal year budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins, when Ms. Cobb and her staff started really digging deep into the Service Authority budget, they they did find that we had income that we didn't know that, you know, that cleaned up. And they've been working really hard to get the accounts in a better and proper order so that we can, that it's less work on them and more ease and ability for the public to see and to be able to understand what what fully the Service Authority has. Was that a good way to describe it, Ms. Cobb?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So is there any other questions on the budget? So everybody can absorb it and it'll come up in the meeting. All right. Next up is the, Mr. Bryce Young, who is our county engineer, and he's going to talk about inflow and infiltration updates on Fairview Beach in Dogren. I know we've been talked about it a lot, but we do have quite a bit of eye on eye issues. It's just the the nature of King George County, it's a topography, but
Ms. Bender? The the issue with the excavator, is it possible for you to take action on that tonight? Because this has been put off for a significant amount of time. And they are working with a piece of equipment that I think was used when it was originally purchased. And uh, it's hanging on by a thread.
I was going to bring that up, but
And so, I mean, I believe it's important if our expectation is for these crews to, you know, do these repairs and so forth, they need to have satisfactory equipment to be able to do what we're asking them to do.
I will bring that when we get to the excavator. We can bring that up as a comment. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Rasavi.
That was, that was the next item on the list. Yeah, you skipped over.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I don't know why I jumped down to see what you get. Sorry, Mr. Young. Uh, thank you for that catch.
I'm chair.
Go ahead.
Just as a point, or you also skipped over the consent agenda.
I'm not on my A-game today.
You can go back. It's all right. I just want to
Yep. Thank you for doing that. I was just so excited to get to the budget. First of all, I actually had to handle it, but thank you for everybody pointing that out. Uh, we will, I will go to the excavator and then we'll jump back to the uh consent agenda. So that would be SA 0603, acquisition of the Service Authority equipment excavator, Mr. Rasavi. And and I think when we found out today from Mr. Eisenbeis, this was what, what, 2007? Is that old? And it was used when we bought it. Mr. Rasavi?
Levita, I believe you you have the state contractor that was under and uh to tell you that price and so forth. Then if Mr. Eisenbeis says anything he wants to add uh to this, but I believe it is something essential to a public works maintenance crew. And so we've got to quit uh having them work with one arm tied behind their back. And uh also I asked uh uh Levita to uh tell us what the fund balance is, which is more than uh sufficient to be able to pay for this item.
Yes, sir. So the quote that Mr. Eisenbeis received for the excavator is 95,502 dollars. Now, this is based on a cooperative contract with Sourcewell. And Sourcewell, they have many different um vendors that you can use. So what we did, we did a price comparison with the other vendors. And Carticad is actually the lowest one. Um, what we also did too was compare a leasing office to see if we come What we also did too was compare a leasing office to see if we come out better with leasing a piece of equipment and establishing a maintenance claim versus buying. And once we did all that research, it came down to paying for it outright and owning it, it's going to serve us better in the long run. And another thing that Mr. Eisenbeis did today is he verified that the quote is still good so through today, I think the end of the, at least the end of the month, they were honored to $95,000, $95,502, this is no record, quote, for us to be able to purchase. I did run the fund balance today and as of today, the service authority has a fund balance of 7.8. So, there is enough in the current operating budget to purchase this a piece of equipment so that the maintenance department can do what they need to do.
I'll piggyback, Mr. Collins, I know you both want to speak on this, but one of the other things, this was brought to former administrations' attention quite a few times and it was not addressed, but it has come to a point where it's kind of critical that the excavator is on its last legs and it really needs to be purchased. So, Mr. Collins, I know you had a comment and then Mr. Davis.
So, is there a trailer and a truck that can pull it?
Mr. Eisenbeis, can you come up and address it?
We have a couple of trucks to haul it and we will be getting a new trailer. It's, we're, right now, we load everything up each time. We're going to get a 17,000-pound trailer to go with that. That will actually haul everything in one time with one trip. We do have several trucks to haul. It's around 2,500-pound bigger machine. That's a 10,000-pound machine. We have a 7,200-pound machine.
What size trailer do you?
17,000-pound, 20-foot long.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
I got one more after him.
Oh, I was just going to get clarity. I know there was another piece, I think a piece of equipment that we were buying with ARPA funds. This isn't the same, this is different than the ARPA funds, right?
Yeah.
I'll go to Mr. Solins and then back to your questions, Tom.
Is it new or used?
New.
And I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but I want to verify. We have, I know we've got the expertise to use it. Do we have the expertise to maintain it and fix it if it breaks?
Okay, cool.
Mr. Collins?
So, I heard you mention 7.8 million-dollar fund balance. So, this is June, so what are the expenditures encumbered till July 1st?
We don't know all of that yet because all of the bills have not been submitted. So, we won't know until we do our final audit.
So, do you think it's 7.8 million dollars?
That's where it sits at today, but I will say that the service authority historically has a general fund balance, so I am confident that we can support this purchase.
Okay. I was not arguing about whether we can support the purchase. I was more interested in the 7.8 million dollars for the end of the year when the rates are so high. I was wondering if we could pay some of our debt down with that 7.8 million dollars or whatever's left over.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that in the process that I'm reviewing, a lot of aspects of this, every time I get targeted in that direction, a new issue pops up where someone left something unattended and didn't resolve it. So, one of those popped up today and so we're trying to get that straight with the health department. But we will have to look at each individual debt instrument. Some you can prepay the debt and others, sometimes it's after a specified period of time in the bond document. I know a lot of the debt through the state revolving fund, they do not allow you to prepay. And so, but I will have to examine each debt instrument to make that determination. And one of the things that I've been working with Ms. Bender and Lavita on is the line of credit, I guess, that was used to acquire the electronic meters or I guess the proper term, was paid for by the borrowed money, which I'm a little confused with. I mean, audits in the past have showed significant cash balances where you would not have necessarily needed to borrow funds. And so, we're looking at that and I know that when I was working over the authority, Patty and I talked a little bit and there always seemed to be, when requests were made to deal with a lot of subject matter, they were always told that funds were available and so forth. You know, obviously, I can't go back in time and look. I can look at an audit and see what, retroactively, but there are a lot of issues, maintenance issues and so forth that need to be addressed because when they're led to fester like that, they only get worse and end up costing more money in the long run.
Yes, sir. So, the past authority took out a 16.5 million dollar line of credit that said they'd ever use it and then spent every penny of it. So, that.
Well, I think there's, is it a million, 1.2? Yeah, I know what it is, but how much has actually been drawn down? 1.2 million. So, we're looking to see how we can rectify that. It's kind of puzzling why you would do that, but anyways.
You mentioned that there was fund balances supposedly every year.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like it's time for a forensic audit. If there's a fund balance of 200, 2 million, whatever, and it's disappeared, it has to, somebody needs to find out where it went. And so, you could do that through a forensic audit.
I'm not, I'm not sure that it disappeared. It's just when the requests were to do something, to fund something, there was always, I guess, comments by certain folks that there was no money available. But, I mean, from what Lavita and I've looked at.
There was money available.
Yeah.
But it wasn't spent?
No.
So, where is it at?
It's in the, it's in the fund balance of the authority.
That's the 7.8?
Yeah.
Ah.
Yeah. And also, when I spoke with Patty earlier in the week, I believe the last billing has went out, Patty. And so, those revenues will be still received and accrued back by the auditors for the current fiscal year.
So, the increase for this budget year is $250,000? So, primarily due to increased customers?
Generating more revenue.
Oh, I thought that was a negative. In other words, you wanted another 2.2?
No.
Now, when you read those reports, that negative part, I learned this in the process, it's not really a negative.
No.
Okay. So, back to the 7.5 or whatever it's going to turn out to be. So, I think that we need to start paying some of this debt down.
I will start researching some of that and see which debt instruments we can in fact pay and then we'll report back to you.
So, if the debt goes down, that means the bills will go down because pretty much half the bill is debt.
It's significant.
So, if we can get some of the money paid down, it would go a long ways to fixing the problems. And you have the 16 million dollar grant that our great senator brought to us.
What was his name again?
I can't recall. But, so that will take care of a bunch of problems that are been sitting on the burner that need immediate attention. So, just to close out my comments, Ms. Bender, I would love to see this debt, this debt be paid down so we can get some of these bills more comfortable. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, we have been looking at that. It's just a little bit at a time. I mean, one of the biggest was exactly what Ms. Cobb and her staff did with the county's budget. We had to get a handle and figure out the line items and if this line item should be here anymore and this column to get it so it's easier for her staff to use and to make sure we knew everything is properly accounted for. And with the service authority being on the board of directors, I remember those times when we had asked if there was any money and they were told there was no money and also we can only make decisions on the information we receive. I've learned in my time in both roles that I've learned a lot more that I was not on the board of supervisors or the board of directors, that I was not told. So, you only could make decisions based on the information you have. Another point about the fund balance in the budget is we are looking, the list that'll come up in a little bit, the list of we prioritized all the repairs that need to be done on all the plants and the water systems and unfortunately, it does come with a price tag. And the ARPA funds in the 16.9 million have already been agreed with DEQ what we can spend it on, so we can't spend it on all of it. There are some other funds, a VDH grant, but that's kind of accounted for. And then with the fund balance, there are, we can prioritize some projects that can be addressed. Now, with the debt, we were also, I've been acquiring documents to give to Mr. Rossavi and Ms. Cobb about each of the, how the loans were taken out and their conditions and we're still found, thanks to Patty, she got ahold of one of them for me today so that we can make sure we have our documents right, so that we can have it legally reviewed to make sure what the payment is on it and what are the restrictions. Is that a good summary of that? So, we're still trying, unfortunately, some of the paperwork was not retained because there, it wasn't all over at the service authority. There was stuff over here, there was stuff not saved, there was stuff saved to a cloud and then the cloud disappeared. So, that's, that's part of the problem. So, we've been trying to assemble it all to get an accurate picture. Mr. Collins?
So, some of the things that you said frustrate me deeply and they frustrate the service authority customers deeply. So, when you say some was here and it was lost and some was there and it was lost, those shenanigans are unacceptable. So, there's three of them on this board that ran last year and said that they want to fix the service authority. And what the one thing the customers fuss most about is the debt. So, if it's not managed, being managed properly and nobody knows where records are located, well, how would you ever expect to get anything fixed or get bills lowered or any of that stuff? It's just, it just boggles my mind that this has gotten so out of control.
Mr. Collins, I'll say it once again, and I've made it my mission this whole time to try to have a roadmap to success and you can't fix in six months what has been left behind for 30 years. It can't happen overnight and there's a pro, I like what Mr. Rossavi told me, inch by inch. That's how you have to take it, inch by inch and try to repair.
One thing, one thing, Mr. Collins, we can, I can get the bond documents because they're with a trustee or somebody. I can find that from an audit if we cannot put our hands on it internally. I can reach out to whoever the lending, because believe me, they have the bond documents and they'll keep close track. So, we can get copies of it. It's just a lot of documents that are needed. It is quite a search sometimes to search down and find documents that we need to make decisions based on.
So, Ms. Bender, I wasn't charging you with any malice or anything like that. I was just saying that.
It's frustrating and I understand.
All these years that this has been a debacle.
It is very frustrating. I would say, when we find these documents, they're being put in a, this fish has been helping set up, you know, a folder so this can be accounted for so that we can save them and they don't disappear again.
So, that, that's good to hear that somebody will know where documents is located. That's kind of like government 101. You should know where your documents are located and how to get to them. If that's not happened in the past, I don't know why, I don't know what happened in the But I know that you're working hard to help this whole thing, Mr. Rossavi. Somehow you got them from the senior advisor to the board of supervisors and I didn't know that you went for the work for the authority now. I thought the board of supervisors were still paying you.
Well, if you want economic development.
So, sounds like you got a demotion.
Apparently so.
Hey, I appreciate it, but as Norm says, if you want your economic development, the service authority has to be on the right track.
That's correct. You're absolutely right. And we need to get some of this debt paid down. I've said that five times in the last five minutes and I'm, and that's the last time I'll say it, but we have got to get this debt paid down. These customers can't take this anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Davis?
I concur on the debt, but I think that also, fore and foremost on that is, like I told my constituents before, we could take all the money out of the account and we could pay all the debt off, but if we're just going to get another million-dollar fine at the end of the year, what does it matter? So, until we get to the place where we're not getting, accumulating more fines, which is really causing some of the debt, pay it down, you pay, we can pay it down $5 million and at the end of the year, you get another million, $2 million fine from DEQ, it's wasted money. So, at the end of the day, we have to make sure and ensure that we're doing something to make sure that those fines are not happening again. We have to be working, I think previously it was pretty much at the end of the year, we just kind of crossed our fingers and hopefully they did or they didn't and then we got one and we, but we weren't meeting with them, whether it's quarterly or monthly or whatever we got to do to see where are we at right now? Where do we stand right now? Is anything coming down the pipeline? What do we need to be working on? What are we getting close on? We need to figure those, we need to monitor that to not put more debt on our constituents and then we worry about paying down the debt. I think, but it's very important to pay it down. You're absolutely right, 100% agree. But fore and foremost, we got to stop accumulating of the fines and the fees and get a good quality of water to our constituents as well as keeping it low in price.
Mr. Collins, I'll just, I was going to jump on what Mr. Davis said. That is one of the reasons we created the finance specialist two position, who Ms. Cobb came up with the idea to create this position to help monitor the funds better and to make sure that we had an accounting on the grants and in proper order. Mr. Collins?
So, the fines that the service authority has accumulated over time, I've been on the board of supervisors two years, I wasn't on the water authority. And one of the time I was on the board of supervisors, I asked in the public comment, how much fines do we have? And I would not get an answer. I asked the general manager, how much fines do we have? How much are they? Couldn't get an answer. So, I did a FOIA. I finally got the answer. It was mind-blowing, the fines that we've accumulated over time of stuff that we shouldn't be accumulating because of bad management. Bottom line, bad management. So, I see the management is much better now. So, I hope that we won't be getting any more fines. And if we do, I hope it's made public. Thank you.
Mr. Solins?
So, now I do have a comment based on what he just said. So, you're right, we did run on wanting to fix the service authority. We also ran on transparency. Information like that should not have to come out through a FOIA request. You know, we should be able to go in and find out how much does a county owe, you know, on, whether it be fines, whether it be the bonds or whatever, that's, it's your money, it's our money that's going to pay for this. You should know what you're paying for.
Mr. Collins, I just want to say, I come, I agree with you and Mr. Davis. You know, we need to pay down that debt. As someone who pays that debt and has paid it for almost the last 10 years at this point, it's, it's something that's important to me and the people that I've talked to in my area about doing this as well. But one problem I do see that, you know, is about to come up, as Ms. Bender said, is the service authority, it's been around for a long time and there's a lot of equipment that's on its last leg and, you know, we need to find that right balance between what debt can we pay and what, what, what do we need to fix? Because there's going to be, I think, some expensive bills on things that need to get, be resolved in the, in the list of things that we have here. So, that's, it's just finding that right balance that we'll get there. I think it's just going to, as Ms. Bender said, just take a little bit of time, but I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, one more time.
Mr. Rossavi, don't we know what needs to be fixed?
So, we have a risk, yes, and we're generating some additional information. We're setting up a meeting with regard to this $5 million for VDH. I communicated with the director of that program and he indicated he had difficulty getting a response back. And he indicated he had difficulty getting a response back from the county. So I'm not sure if it was, but Mr. Miller was the one who signed the agreement that was submitted. And so I explained to him uh that we're going to have a meeting to figure out. I've talked to Bryce. He provided me some of the information because we could not locate the signed contract in the county administrator's office. So we we're gathering all that data. We're going to have a meeting to figure out where we're at because that money has to be spent or committed by the end of this calendar year. And we certainly don't want to have to give back any more ARPA funds than we have to. And uh but he he was kind of frustrated because uh he was unable to reach anybody. Here so but which I didn't want to argue with the state official, but it seems me to have called the county administrator's office. Someone would have given one of us the information. But anyways, that's neither here that we're going to address it. Uh, and then he agreed once we meet to figure out the projects that were listed on there, what the status of it is. Which I think Bryce has more of the information and Travis to update us so we can report back to him. And then he's going to set up a meeting with uh whomever in the health department is signed to our uh account. Because the individual who originally sent the letter no longer works at uh VDH. He transferred over to DQ. So.
But we do have a list of what next needs to be done.
There there's a one list of the water projects that for this five million dollar grant that a lot of communities receive through the Department of Health. And uh then there was the funds that DQ had that Mr. Stewart uh was able to get in sixteen million dollars. And a follow up to what Mr. Davis said about the fine, uh taking these two plants offline is critical. They were simply never designed to do what we're asking them to do. And so one is covered by the grant. Uh, I'm trying to track down uh data with regard to uh what's the plant at the upper end, yeah?
Oakland Park.
Oakland Park, where the force main needs to be put in to come to Hopyard. Uh, I found many studies that reference this. Uh, the authority approved a PER to be conducted. But from my understanding, speaking with Travis, that was never completed. On the uh a PER for the force main coming to Hopyard from the plant at the upper end of the county that we're going to decommission, yes.
Bryce, can you come up?
I apologize, but the PER itself from Oakland Park to Hopyard has not been done, isn't it?
Right. But that that is something that is a critical step that we need to be doing because those two plants. I mean, all your plants under consent, so but those two, in my view, from what I've read, are on the absolute worst condition. And they need to be commissioned as quickly as possible.
So they've been under uh consent since I was born.
It appears that way.
And um. It's all they've been doing is passing a buck down the road. So you have with the sewer, you have sixteen point five million that you have have a list of these things that to be taken care of.
Right. But it's not does not include that one. It's it's decommissioning the plant uh.
Perkins.
Perkins. But it is not it is not inclusive of the other. But as I explained to Ms. Bender, that needs to be done promptly. They, I I don't remember the date of the the action that the service authority took. And I don't know why nobody followed through. I think there was one study.
I know why.
Okay, well, anyways, back in, I think it was either two seventeen or two eighteen. Uh, there was another study for forced mains and pump stations where there was an estimate in there for three million dollars. I assume that prices went up since that time for a fourth main, but you actually have to have an engineering study. To determine uh what options are the best financial options for you to approve. And and that requires the engineering firm to do that.
Mr. Collins, on Oakland Park, it was looked at initially with the sixteen point nine million. But the costs were too expensive to do Oakland Park and Perkins Corner. So Perkins was chose because it's in the worst condition.
Well, I understand what the problems are and I understand what the fixes are. But I don't understand why nobody will do it, why don't fix the stuff and get it done instead of keep talking about it. And um you have this money available through these grants. Let's get it done. Um, I'm not talking to you, Ms. Bender. I'm talking in in general. So the reason why the things haven't happened in the last couple of years was called incompetence. So it was just nothing but incompetence. And um. I went through the office. On January second and found. So that word that I'm talking about, and I don't want to bash somebody that's not around, but it was just. The most shenanigans debacle I've ever seen. So now Ms. Bender um taking over the service authority. We're moving in a good direction, but we need to take action, use the money as force, stop the consent. Start retaining records, quit the shenanigans, move forward so we can be transparent, open and deliberate with the taxpayers. And it sounds like Norm, you're going to be the chairman of the service story for the next fifteen years. Congratulations. We'll bring you a plaque next time.
Let's tell you what, come on down to Gampoint and talk to my wife.
I was going to say, maybe we can um without mentioning names, you know, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Collins, maybe we can get. I know there's some business that kind of wants to go in between Oakland and Hopyard, but maybe. Maybe they could help kind of make that happen. I I don't know who it would be, but I'm just saying.
Mr. Solans.
So I I like pretty much all the stuff that I'm hearing now, but I just want to clarify, are we still talking about an excavator?
I'm going to loop back to that. That's why I was trying to get, because I wanted to show, because we do have a list that was prepared with all the stuff on it and and so we can address it. But they have big ticket items and so we only can address it that inch by inch philosophy is that. We can't tackle it all to increase the debt, but we can chip away at it and and have priorities. But let me come back to the excavator because that is a high priority. And so could we at least vote and have a motion to approve the approval of the excavator?
I make a motion to approve the uh purchase of the excavator.
Second.
That, can I have the amount? I forgot the.
I think it was ninety five.
Ninety five thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Asked stated.
Second.
Wait, Mr. Stewart, does it need to be?
Motion include the trailer to carry it on.
Yeah, we don't have the, we don't have the.
Right. So we have a motion. You seconded, Mr. Solans? Any further discussion? So this is money. We'll go down the line.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Collins.
Aye.
Mr. Solans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. You got your excavator, John.
What happens to the other excavator?
Are we going to put it to be be sold or? Going to General Properties?
Go it falls apart.
It's like you just gave John his birthday present, I think. I don't know when your birthday is, but today's your birthday for the. All right, I'm going circling back now to uh the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, Mr. Collins? Do you have any discussion? All uh since uh all those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, wait a minute, that has to be by roll call, right, Mr. Stewart? The consent agenda? The consent agenda, the warrants has to be by roll call or not? Okay.
Oh.
All right.
Warrants due.
Most. All right, well, we'll just do it by roll call just to make sure.
Aye.
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 We still haven't done a roll call, but aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. I was pointing. Just had to change it up a little bit. Can I have approval of the minutes? Have an approval of the minutes?
A motion. All right. Make a motion and we approve the minutes as written.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion properly saying, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We will now move. All right, I know we jumped all over the place, but you will now go to S eight oh six. Oh four, which is inflow infiltration update on Fairview Beach in Dogrum. Mr. Young.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. King George Service Authority has procured Vizzi Sewer to perform closed circuit television inspections on our sewer systems. In two areas within the county. The Tenth Street Pump Station Basin in Dogren and Potomac Avenue Pump Station Basin in Fairview Beach. This process will involve cleaning, inspection and documentation of the pipes with a camera that is launched from manholes through the sewer lines. This will allow the county to pinpoint issues that lead to groundwater entering the sewer system as well as comply with. Consent orders requiring us to inspect parts of our sewer system each year. Thank you. And any questions?
Right. We have questions. It's really important because we do have some big issues with I N I in Dogren and Fairview Beach. And that does come up with consent orders. So one of the things on here is a is a truck to actually help us be able to, what is it, twenty percent a year? Go to make sure we hit all the systems to look for breaks in pipes, inflow.
That is a good standard to live by is uh try and inspect your uh systems by about twenty percent of your system a year. And that way, every five years, you inspect the entire system.
And find problems before they occur.
Correct.
Do I have any questions on it? Mr. Solans?
That sounds awesome on the on the top. Um, are we sure we're rotating each, you know, like twenty percent this year, a different twenty percent next year and so on? And not just going back to the same each year? Are we tracking that somehow?
Well, this is a very new program since I've been here and. Uh, so far, we have not done the same sewer line twice. I can very much guarantee you that. And the twenty percent a year is a standard we would strive for once we get a truck where we can do it in house.
Cool. Thank you.
Yes, because one of one of the issue, they were trying to address the places that have the most I N I, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any other question? Mr. Collins?
I heard truck leaves by.
That that's in here on the spreadsheet. There might be a possibility that in in Boden has a truck and and we can use it as part of the contract also. Is that correct? Mr. Young?
Uh, possibly. I have not heard whether or not.
That's a possibility. So there are other options. It's on the list. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right, uh, Ms. Cobb, I know Ms. Cook cannot be here. Is there still, are you going to present for a primary award of construction service agreement with Langford Excavating and Utilities?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We would like to authorize the interim general manager of the King George County Service Authority. To execute construction service agreement with Langford Excavating and Utilities. As the primary contractor and a secondary award of construction service agreement with Mueller, Muller Incorporated. Subject to approval as to form by the county attorney. Procurement issued and request for proposal number oh four oh eight twenty twenty four dash fourteen hundred. To solicit responses from qualified firms for on-call water and sewer line repair and construction on March fourth, twenty twenty four. Three proposals were received and reviewed by an evaluation committee of four staff members. Staff coordinated interviews with each firm and found Langford Excavating and Utilities. And Muller Inc. qualified and capable of any potential task orders required. And I believe Ms. Cook included the cost proposal for each of those offers in your board packet.
Thank you. And since this is a discussion item, there's questions right now and and this is for on-call. So if we have a major repair and we need to bring somebody in, this is an on-call service. Mr. Collins.
Who was on the committee?
Mr. Collins, I do not have that answer for you, but.
Go ahead, Ms. Cobb.
Um, the committee was uh Bender, um, Mr. Norm Rosavi and Mr. Bryce Young.
And John.
And John, that's right, John.
Thank you.
I'm just stepping in.
Does anybody have any questions? Right now?
Ma'am Chairman, I uh personally called the references. There's a lot of the local governments that were listed by them. Obviously, I've dealt with those people over the years. And they were very satisfied with both of these uh vendors in departments and providing service and their capability.
Thank you very much. Right. Thank you for presenting that. So this will be on the agenda for the next meeting. All right, now we're up for the the big list. So this is um all of my colleagues have a list at their uh seats. And in the packet, there is, it has been added to the packet. We worked a long, long time on this. We had meetings with our staff. With finance and with Emboden to try to help us come up with these lists of high priority, medium and low priority. You will notice there is some items that look high priority and they are for Perkins, but we what as we said, we're decommissioning a plant. So we're trying to get Perkins to the end without spending a lot of money on Perkins. And uh taking some stuff that's going to happen at Dogren, we might be able to bring some parts to Oakland Park and to Perkins to help. Get it to the end, but uh if uh Mr. Rosavi can jump in and Ms. Cobb give a little bit more information. Ms. Cobb on the finance side and Mr. Rosavi on just on the list. And I want to thank the whole staff that came up with this list. And Emboden for, and we did a deep dive. We spent a whole day working with them to come up with this list. Go ahead.
I don't have a copy of the list in my packet. Yeah. Uh, basically, several weeks ago, we had a meeting with Emboden and. Everybody who was a part of Bryce and uh I believe Travis uh was there as well. And we went through all of these items that were listed uh with regard to whether they were high priority, medium, low priority. And then uh they were uh reviewed with regard to which ones were going to be addressed with the sixteen million dollars. And I believe uh they went through that list. And identified those, what the estimated cost is. And as I said, some of these will be paid for by those funds. Uh, we will have to look at other sources to fund some of these items. But we're trying to address the high priority items that have been listed by Emboden and and others from the staff. John was at that meeting and uh. Emboden was pleased. They said they had tried to get this meeting for the past three years and were unable to uh. Get the meeting set up to to discuss these things. So we've discussed them. We've addressed it. The ones that will be taken care of under the grant and these other ones, we will have to look at and figure out a way. To finance or address the solution to those that do not have grant funding or look at possible additional grant funding.
Ms. Cobb, would you like to add anything to that on the funding side? Because you did a good work trying to identify and get everything and I appreciate that.
No, no problem. Um, so that is still a work in progress. We want to make sure that. We act, you know, actively account for everything that's going on this current fiscal year to make sure we're not overstepping. Or doing anything outside of what we are supposed to be doing.
I appreciate. I just wanted clarification. So folks would expect to see the funding source, but they're still working on it to make sure that we have the books closed. And that the funds are available to do that. The ARPA funds, like the sludge press, that is one of the things that we got put in to the ARPA that would be a that can be addressed. But if we have any questions, I know the list just came out because we, one, the other things we made sure once the list was created. We sent it to all the departments involved to make sure that we got everything accurate and precise and the priority list correct. Because I know myself, Ms. Cobb took notes in that meeting and then the notes were transcribed and then we just made sure everything was correct before we gave it for public viewing. Mr. Davis, do you have any? The bonds, go ahead.
So a lot of stuff on this list is unknown as far as cost. And some of them are at high pri- And some of them are at high priority. So why don't we know?
Well, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I've spoke with Mark in Bowden, and I plan to, since we have a new arrival here, I'm hoping that frees up a little bit more of my time. And I know Mr. Solans, he said you want to go along with a tour of these plants. I'll stop by and pick you up, and we'll go visit the syrup plant. And we need to talk to him a little bit more length and different options about some of these because some of this equipment is old, and they're not even sure the manufacturer still exists. And I know Bryce, Bryce has left, but he was looking at some different options as well, some new technology and so forth. So it's just going to be a process of examining it, try to figure out what the true cost is, and then figuring out how to pay for it.
What is the, so all the numbers on the list that are estimated costs, what's that total?
You go with the combined total. Are you talking about the ones that aren't funded through the sixteen million dollars?
Oh, this is the list that I'm looking at. No, what?
What's the estimated cost list? No, I don't think we we totaled that up.
Yeah, we we don't have that total yet. We're still working on that because it's the lengthy list.
Where's this money coming from?
This is most of that sixteen million dollar money through the E Q. It's agreement at the vendor time last month.
And and the other ones, we're trying to figure out how to funding. So you got to identify the problem first, and we've identified all the issues, and now it's trying to figure out how you find it. And I think this is, and I've talked to lots of folks in the past. I've talked to Ms. Barker, who's been here, almost the life of the Service Authority. This is the first time this has ever been done, an extensive list like this, to be able to. Is that about a fair statement, an extensive list like this?
Like I say, Mr. Collins, I have read the minutes that you provided me to the authority from beginning to present, and a lot of these items were discussed many years ago, and we're still still discussing them today. And so.
Project number one, automated system is high priority. And the task is continue to repair automated controls, lost unknown. And it says, high priority per D Q, request this for years. So again, here we are.
Yes, sir. I've read all that. We, I've talked to John about some of these things that we can do internally. And so we just have to take them one by one to determine the best, the most cost-effective way we can address it.
Mr. Izzam, can you come up a second? Because I want to point out one thing that we found out in going through this list is something so simple as a new software you needed to address, especially at Hop Yard. And could you explain a little bit about that software? We already purchased it. But how it was vital, and we didn't even, something so simple as software?
We have several versions of P L Cs at our plants, our water wells, such things. We had the software for the old, old version, the twenty-year-old version. We had no software to to troubleshoot any of the new stuff, which is a lot of the Dogron cost. Now we have the software. We can actually go and see what instrumentation isn't working and actually put a price tag to that. But without being able to see it, we can't do anything.
And we are already signed it. We purchased the software because it was under the amount, but that is a vital piece to be able to identify the problems and then be able to find out what we need to address and then have a price tag to fix it. But that's something so simple as software, which has now been purchased. I don't think it's here yet, but it's coming.
Got here today.
Yeah, I was got here today. So it really is your birthday today.
Pretty much, yep.
Didn't get lost like the records.
No, didn't get lost. Well, unfortunately, we had bought that. We had bought a version of the software before, and nobody knew where the license was for it or anything. We so we basically bought part of it again. But now we keep all that stored in a locked-up file cabinet. Everything is secured. We'll keep track of that stuff.
Because all we can do in the future, from now on, is make sure the reppers are kept. I can't go back and fix. We all can't go back and fix the past, but we can make sure from forward, everything is addressed and and where it needs to be.
So the records that are kept, is there a second, another copy somewhere?
We kept it electronically, and we kept it in locked up in the file cabinet.
Okay, thank you.
So with this, just one quick question. With the list we have basically here, I know we said most of the the costs are coming from the, or maybe from the the grant funding. Is there something that actually identifies in the list? What is that, or?
We do have a list. We will get that once everything is completed.
I just wanted to make sure this got out. Keep highlighting it's coming, so here it is. I wanted to make sure. And we also have in the grant that is online, at least the unsigned copy. It does show you exactly what in buried in the document, it shows you what, but the sludge press is one of them.
So.
Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
These two documents, this one is the projects and the budget. So that'll be posted. Ms. Fish?
It is posted with the agenda.
It's the chair. It's posted now.
Posted now. Thank you.
Do I have any other questions on it? You know, it's a step. It's daunting, but we can do it.
Say one thing. I mean, this this just brings up some stuff I was talking about when you got on here, need to fix A S A P incurring local fines. And then the next item is need to fix A S A P incurring local fines. Like if we're putting priority on things, that's the bleeding that has to stop. That's just, it's such a waste of money. You spend the money, get the stuff fixed, whatever the fines are coming from, that should be like a priority for us right now to stop the bleeding so we can get this thing under control.
Thank you. I agree with you, but we had to, this list is the most vital part. We had to identify the problems first, and then we can have a path forward. All right. Lastly, we already talked about was the utility billing specialist, what we'll bring up. Does anybody have any further questions on that position? Because it is a big cost savings to eliminate uni billing and bring it back in-house. And I I've talked to quite a few customers in the last week, and especially the folks from last night. They've had a lot of complaints about customer service and how they pay their bills, and they would love for it to be in-house again. And I think in the end it will save the citizens around the circle. I almost said taxpayers. They're taxpayers too, money by being in-house. Is there any other questions on the billing specialist position? It'll be on the, for action. I'm next. All right. Well, all that, I'll bring now next to our secondary public comment to address meeting business matters only. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please provide your full name and district when submitting your public comment so that it can be properly recorded, including the public record. Would anybody like to come up and speak? I know it's been a little bit of a discussion. Anybody like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board of the Service Authority. My name is Hobie Mitchell. I'm a managing partner over at Green Energy Ventures. Had a lot of experience about water and sewer systems, and listening to this last discussion triggers the thought in my mind. I think the decommissioning of the Oakland Park is very important. I see that. Have to figure out a funding mechanism. Have some thoughts about that. But you're spending money to fix it where you could use it to decommission and send it up to Hop Yard. With that said, you got to make sure that Hop Yard can accept it. And so the capital cost to do that, you have to consider. So the cost, you have to see all the cost effectiveness of decommissioning, one, savings can go into something else, but you got to remember you got to do some things at Hop Yard, but you also have to expand the capacity for accepting all these things, plus other things. I, we, we met earlier about some strategy about that. We'd be glad to participate in discussion and how that costs can be cost effective to the county as well and the Service Authority. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to speak? Knew you'd come up to speak.
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Lovell. I really want to thank you for the service you're doing right now. Four of you are new, only been five months. You cannot fix the things been for thirty years. And I really, really appreciate it. And I'm going to tell you something. This gentleman, Mr. Rizavi, show you all the work. You should show all of them what you're doing. He does a lot of work. Mrs. Bender also, they're two working together really hard. They try to find papers. He tried to show me a lot of papers. It is just a lot of work he did. I don't know. We had to pray that he doesn't leave us because he leave us, I don't know if it's going to find all these papers. He works all the time. He comes over here. He works on papers, doing papers, find things that, you know, they they.
I'm going to have to hire you as my agent.
He only gets paid for twenty-nine hours, no matter what he does.
He work, 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 work. The two of them working together. I really appreciated it. We, we want to pray that he's not leaving us because I never saw a man working so hard for the county. Thank you. And Mrs. Bender too.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to get, come up? Do we have anybody online, Mr. Dye?
No, Madam Chair.
And then in the small amount of time we get any correspondence? With that being said, could I have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion that the Board of Directors adjourn to Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, five thirty P M at the King George Parks and Recs Building located at eight zero seven six Kings Highway, King George, Virginia, two two four eight five.
Second.
And a motion, probably second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. Board of Supervisors, no public presentations, action items. Establish the due date for real estate and personal property taxes. Mr. Where you on deck again? You all can stay.
Mr. Chairman, in speaking with the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer, although we were trying to be very promptly to get the budget done in a timely fashion that the auditors had spoke to me about, they have decided to extend the deadline from June fifth, I believe, to the seventeenth, is that correct? And the state statute requires the Board of Supervisors to adopt a resolution to approve that. You can approve it up to ninety-day extension. But what we did is just to keep everything organized and lawful. We need you to approve this resolution so that they can in fact do that. I know the tax bills have been sent out, but this is a proper method to do that.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Sir? Make a motion that we authorize the interim general manager. Make sure I'm looking at the right one here. Nope, wrong one. Sorry. Thank you.
The res- the resolution is on the tab five.
I've got it. Thank you. Make a motion that we authorize the county treasurer to extend the late payment date from June fifth, twenty twenty four, to June seventeenth, twenty twenty four for real estate and personal property taxes.
Okay.
Second.
Probably second. Is there any discussion? Being done by roll call, Mr. Solans?
Aye.
Ms. Bender?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ready? Thank you. Discussion items six oh three FEMA staffing and adequate fire emergency rescue grants.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good evening to to each of you. Tonight, I want to talk to you about two grant opportunities that that are in front of us and also to discuss kind of give you an overview of each of the grants and also talk to you about some of the strings that are attached to those grants and hopefully end with some some direction from the board on what the pleasure and will of the board is. Before we talk about that, just want to take a minute to talk to you a little bit about the history of some of the grants that our department has successfully over the years have have received. We've received grants for communication radios, S C B As, emergency stretcher cots, auto compression devices for for doing CPR. The sheriff's utility vehicle, we received a grant for that. We received kind of spearheaded the the beachfront erosion project. That's in Fairview Beach. Many of you are certainly aware of that. We've gotten grants for heart monitors and A E Ds. We've gotten grants for computer mobile data terminals, and we've received grants for personnel over the years. All in all, since two thousand thirteen, we've been keeping track of more of a detailed tracking of competitive and competitive grants. We've received over close to about six million dollars in in grants. These grants, I just want to hit on, these grants allow us to to update and modernize some of our equipment and also have a for a safer and more protected community without putting the the financial burden on the taxpayer. So there there are a lot of grants that are out there. We're very aggressive with going after those grants. And two of those grants are what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. The first grant is the, what we refer to in our industry as the Safer Grant. The Safer Grant is a FEMA grant, and it stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. Essentially, what this grant is, is funding people, funding new firefighters. So the the grant is, is, you can see a little bit of history about the about the grant, but the the main purpose is hiring additional firefighters and providing funding for compensation and benefits for a period of three years. As you know, as our county grows, about every budget cycle, I come before this board and before the county administrator, and I say on most years, hey, we need, we need some additional people. We, we, we're getting more calls, calls, certainly emergency calls for service. And and and, you know, we're asking for additional positions to be able to handle the service that we're rendering to the public and community. We've received a Safer Grant before in the past. In two thousand sixteen, we received three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And in two thousand seventeen, we received funding for six, six firefighters at a at a cost of one point three million dollars. The performance period has changed a little bit over the years. Now, if you, if you would like us to apply for the grant, and if the grant was awarded, there is no scale down like there has been in the past. Essentially, what the federal government does is they pay you three years. It pays for compensation and it pays for benefits. Okay, there are some startup costs that would have, that the county would have to provide, but the period's thirty-six months. Now, here's the big loophole, and this is where certainly the strings are attached. After three years, all a hundred percent of the funding is borne by the locality. Okay, so essentially, it kind of, it's a, it's a grant to help you offset a few years of the of the fiscal impact. So that way you can kind of plan and prepare for year four, five, and six, and so on and so forth. The purpose of the of the of the grant is to provide dedicated staffing for a special service apparatus in accordance to NFPA seventeen ten, seventeen twenty staffing and response standards. So essentially, what that means is that is that FEMA says if you apply for this grant, we're not just going to give you X positions just because you want that. We want, we want, you have to apply for this grant, and you have to show us how you would meet the national standard. So if you can't meet the national standard, well, certainly you can apply, but the purpose of the grant is to meet the national standard from a staffing perspective. So in order for us to do that, in order to meet those standards, we believe it would require twelve positions. That's a total of four people per shift. we believe it would require 12 positions. That's a total of four people per shift. There's three shifts. Okay, so 12 total positions in order to tie it in to meet the standard of 1710 and 1720. Three years of funding is $3.27 million. Uh, if, if we applied for it and if we were awarded, I would have to come back before this board and say, congratulations, you got this FEMA award. Now, what do you want to do with it? Do you want to accept it or do you want to deny it? Okay, now in the past, and it's not necessarily, um, they don't really go out publicly and say this, but they, there have been occasions in the past where they will say, hey, uh, you, you, you go back to them and say, we put in for 12, but we want to, we, we, we're looking, you know, we're, we're comfortable with going with eight. We want to modify our grant application. That they will come back to you and, 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 um, either approve or deny that. Okay, but in the past, there has been some negotiation when it comes to position. So I throw that out there. It's not a, it's not a, a promise that they make, but it has been done in, in, in the past. So essentially, um, I would just like to, uh, you know, present that to the board, um, and forget some feedback. Is this the will of the board? Would you like us to apply for the Safer Grant? Would you not like us to apply for the Safer Grant? And provide some direction on, uh, what you'd like to do. Or if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer it. I'll stop right there because I know we have the next agenda item is going into the DOD grant. Thank you.
Chief Moody, what, um, when it talks about, uh, crew leader or, or position to operate a special apparatus, what, what apparatus is that and do we already have whatever it is?
So this would be, uh, primarily staffing, uh, the heavy rescue, which we cer- which we currently cross staff. So either, either our firefighters are on the fire engine or they're on the rescue, but they can't be on boat. So in order to meet the national standard, we are saying that the, that want, that the, uh, that the heavy rescue is not, does not have permanent staffing, which it doesn't. Because it's cross staffed. It uses a certain set of people that have to go between this vehicle and that vehicle. So, uh, so the, the, the other piece of that is also primarily, uh, putting some staffing and, um, on, on some of our tankers. And we don't have any staffing on our tankers. We essentially cross staff those vehicles as well too.
Okay. So these, the positions here, you don't, you don't have to ask for 12 positions in the grant. You, you can mo- you can modify that from the beginning. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, you could. Here's the problem. It's hard to tie it into that national standard.
Because that's, that's the national, that's exactly, that's what I was getting at. Thank you, sir.
And, and, and Mr. Davis, to your point, we could do that, uh, if, and submit the application based on that. The problem is, is that it would, it would probably be very early rejected.
Who's writing, are you writing the grant yourself? Is this something you do? Is this something that?
This is something we would do in-house.
Yeah, thank you.
Good question. So these positions, if we got the grant form, eventually the grant runs out and we would have to then fund them, correct?
Yes, ma'am, uh, on year four.
We would have to fund them fully as a county?
On year four, starting year four.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that question from?
Yes, sir.
Typically, these grants are scaled down where they'll pay 100% one year or two years and then it scales down. Is there any obligation to keep these people on if you accept this grant? So if the county takes it over in year four, do they have to keep them employed in year four? And is there any obligation that you keep them for any certain period of time beyond that?
It's my understanding there is no obligation. However, the intent is, is that that would happen. However, you, you're, there's no legal agreement or contract you would sign that, that, uh, that these, you know, these people would be. The, the problem where you get in is to, you know, successfully recruiting people and then, you know, letting them know it's only a three-year term or it's a temporary employment. I think that would be a recruitment challenge, uh, but there is no, no requirement that they continue.
Chief, in the past, we've talked and, um, I, I think you guys are down by, what was it, 17 billets understaffed?
Yes.
Are those funded billets?
The, no, no, they're, those are not, I, I want to make sure we're, we're talking, uh, apples and apples.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm pausing on this, shifting back to, you know, your day-to-day operations. You're down by about 17 billets. Or, you know, there's about 17 firefighters you would like to add to your staff.
Correct.
Are those funded already?
No.
Okay, would this be a means of getting those, m- most of those funded for at least three years?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's kind of the follow-on for where it goes.
All right. Mr. Davis?
I'm, I'm under the, my thoughts on the impression that any kind of grant that we could go after, we should try to go after, you know? And when, when I just, I got a list of all some of the new legislation that took place in the state. It was like pages and pages and pages and almost like we should have a, a grant writer on staff who just applies to everything, you know, and, and just to see what we can get, just to everything, just to apply, apply, apply. So I, I have no issue with you applying to see if we can get those funds.
All righty. Next one.
Next grant is the, uh, Defense Community Infrastructure Program Grant. We refer to that as a D- DCIP grant. This is a Department of Defense grant, and as we've had some pretty robust conversations about our Company Two, our new Company Two Fire and Rescue Station, we found out a, we found last year a potential grant opportunity that was a pilot program by DOD to support, uh, there was $100 million of, for available funding to support state and local governments with the impact of a federal, uh, DOD installation. Um, so last year, we did apply for that. Uh, we did not get it. Um, there was, uh, 104 grant applications that qualified and there were 17 grant awards throughout the, throughout the country. Uh, what we would be seeking, uh, again, is the will of the board. Any discussion or, or direction from the board about applying for this grant? Uh, this grant, um, was, it was funded again this year in the passage of the, uh, National Defense Authorization Act. And, uh, this is a, a little, uh, some information that's on their website. Uh, the big key with this grant is that it has to qualify for the grading of the, of that military value that's down below. So we have to show a direct nexus of how a Company Two Fire Station would have military value to, uh, to the base. And, um, I think we can, we can certainly, uh, tell a good story of how it would do that and how it, uh, that, that the Dogren community, uh, has, has, has grown over the years primarily on the basis of, of some of the expansion and activities that occur, uh, on the, uh, the naval, uh, installation. So, we know that we need a, 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 a new, uh, Company Two Fire and Rescue Station. Uh, what, uh, some of the next steps in that process would be, uh, is getting a letter of support from the commanding officer. Uh, that would be, uh, Captain, uh, Captain Wilson, also from Naval Surface Warfare, Warfare Center, uh, of Dogren, uh, the King George Economic Development Authority. If the board's direction is to, uh, is to move forward on this grant, uh, it would also be a, uh, a letter from, from the county administrator, uh, uh, essentially, uh, that the board is approving to go forward on the grant. Um, and your, there, there was, there has been one revision that's different from your slides on your screen, uh, where I think it said 8.4 million in construction costs. The grant proposal would be modified for a, asking for $6.8 million. Uh, that would be due to some of the reduction in size that we're looking for the station. Uh, I do want to emphasize that, uh, if, if we were very blessed enough to get this grant, that this, uh, would not cover every expense and every penny of the project. There would be some, uh, expenses that the county would have to pay for. This doesn't include architectural and engineering services. It doesn't include some of the site work. Um, and, uh, and I think some of the, uh, uh, some of the other items in the building, it doesn't include. I think some of them are like furnishings and such like that. But it would include, uh, the entire construction of the, of the building. So it would, it would definitely be a, a huge dent, uh, into the project if we were to get that awarded. There is no, uh, no match requirement for King George, so it'd be 100% funding. Uh, any, uh, locality that has a population less than 100,000 would not have to, uh, have a match required. Uh, so that's certainly a plus. Um, and then, uh, the, the application would be due, uh, coming up, uh, June 17th of this month. And, uh, looking at August of eight, uh, notification if the grant is selected. So it's going to be a, it would be a pretty quick turnaround. I'm happy to answer any questions that, uh, any of the board may have and, um, hopefully get some direction on that grant as well.
Um, I know I supported you when you, you applied for this last year and you learned a lot of lessons, learned by, they gave you a lot of feedback. And it, it, it does impact with moving it. We have to move it because, you know, conditions on the site and it's close to the base and that causes a bit of a problem. So I agree to, well, at least you got to try because you might be awarded it. If not, it's a lost opportunity.
Do we have any idea how many, uh, calls NDW runs on, on our behalf?
We do. It's, uh, I'd say they're probably in our county about, you know, once every, um, 48 hours on average. So it's, it's, it's quite frequent. It, um, it's, some of that is, i- is also how many times we're, we're in, you know, on the base.
Right.
And they're in our county much more frequently now than we are, you know, providing service on the base. But we, we do a lot of training with them. We do a lot of, uh, you know, we have active shooter drills that are, that occur on the base. A lot of emergency management planning. So I, I think we can tell a good story and also some of the contractors that are surround, that are in the county, uh, that, uh, that, that we as a county have to provide service to them.
Okay, so it's easy to quantify this and turn it into, like you say, a narrative on why it benefits?
It, it, it is easy in some ways and a little bit harder in others of what the grant's looking for, but we, we, we believe we can, we can put together a, a, a highly competitive grant.
Okay, I, I see you went from, like you said before, we went from 8.4 million on the slides here to 6.8 up there. Is there a chance of, uh, pricing yourself out of this by going too high or, um, going too low and, okay, well, now we could have gotten more money? Can, can you put a window on it or something or is it got to be a hard number?
Yeah, it, it does have to be a pretty hard number. And one of the things we learned last year, that's, that's a, it's a great question, is with some of these federal grants that we've dealt with in the past is that sometimes they come back to you and they say, hey, we don't have, we don't have 6.8 million. We got 5 million. Take it or leave it. This is not one of those grants. So it's, it, it is either, um, it's either all or nothing based on the availability of funding in the grant. Last year, I think we outpriced ourselves. I think we went too high because this grant has a cap of $20 million. So we put in for essentially all the site work, all the engineering. Uh, and what we found is with the 17 awards and 104 qualified applicants, if you average those out, you're at roughly $5.9 million per project. So this is why I do like this number better because it brings us closer to the value of what was been awarded in the past. I hope I answered that question.
All righty. Thank you. 605 Professional Services Agreement with a New Fire Station. Mr. Dillard?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I come before you to authorize the county to take the following action. Transfer $789,847 from the construction line of the Firehouse Preschool Bond, GL number 4302094144-8212 to the engineering line for the Firehouse, for the Firehouse, GL 430294145-3140, and execute a professional service agreement with Mosley Architects in the amount of $789,847 for professional architectural engineering and construction administration services associated with the new fire station, subject to approval as deformed by the county administrator. At the March 5th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting, the selection committee and I propose to the Board of Supervisors to table an award for the professional services agreement with Mosley Architects for renegotiation of services to be performed. After numerous meetings with the selection committee, Mosley Architects and members of the board, a revised cost proposal has been submitted for professional architectural services to include design, construction, administration services, site planning, and geotechnical studies associated with the new fire station. The new fire station would be located on approximately 3.15 acres of county-owned land on Windsor Drive, adjacent to the Oakland Baptist Church and be approximately 14,600 square feet. I have included in your attachment, uh, the breakdown of the new changes for the construction administration phase cost estimate and the cost of services proposed submitted by Mosley.
So what was the total?
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe Ms. Dillard did not, you didn't receive the latest email attempt. There's another one that's lower than that. It's under 700,000. Uh, Matt, you, you have your copy.
Sorry, I didn't know that.
Very late.
So this is going to be for discussion. It's not for an action?
Yes, just discussion. And I will revise.
You have, you have a copy, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I believe too that he indicated in that resubmission, there were some things that were removed. And I think Mr. Smolnik and I would need to have some further conversations with him about that to determine if that is how we want to proceed.
So the further reductions were $11,000 from the design survey, 7,500 underground utility loc- location survey, $3,200 easement plats, $12,000 removed in geotechnical engineering services, $2,500 for pre, prelim wet, uh, wetland assessment, $2,500 for the, uh, SWPP, the SMP registration, $43,000 for fundamental commissioning services. That will be, that reduces the price to, um, down to 695 by 82,000, 698.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it, it, uh, just for clarification, these, these figures that, uh, we received in the, uh, the email this afternoon, they still need to be borne by another firm, just not Mosley Architects. So this work still needs to be done. It's, it would just would not be part of the Mosley contract. I just want to make that clarification.
Right, it's open for discussion.
Well, I've been kind of accused of being a straight shooter, so I just got to ask the hard questions sometimes and do we work with any other architectural firm besides Mosley? Because I mean, it's, this seems to be the only group that pops up, whether it's the school or any kind of building project we do. We seem to just kind of be.
Yeah, I've got my hand in the air.
One place. So I'm just kind of wondering that out. I mean, I know since, uh, Cusenberry was here, it's kind of been that way and it's kind of kept going on and on and on. And I know they, and they've done a good job and they've made millions and millions of dollars off through, with King George County already. I'm just wondering, is, is there anyone else that we look at? Because I don't know what the final price tag was because I left the meeting the other day, what people are agreed upon. I know what my price tag is in my head on what I want to expend on something. I know what my price tag is in my head on what I want to expend on something. And I, sometimes I want to speak to an architectural firm and just sit down and go, this is our budget for a building? Design that building. Whether it's eight and a half million or ten million or whatever we want to do and say, this is how much our budget is, this is what we want to spend. Make that thing happen. And I haven't, I know Mosley does a good job and it's not to offend, I'm just being honest about where I am right now, so I hope you don't, not offended. But I think that they also just recently had designed a maintenance buil- building for us is like put, put together a proposal on how much that would cost. And I believe it, and it was, there were just some numbers in that, that were just so far out of whack. I mean, it was a still building with no windows and no doors, it was three hundred thousand dollars and we went out and bought it for like seventy-eight thousand dollars. Because I, I buy those all the time and I know it doesn't cost three hundred thousand dollars. Then they, then to build a four thousand square foot maintenance building to house lawnmowers and tractors was like three point two million dollars. Which I know we can build that for, at the highest end, a million dollars. So just, I'm, I'm wondering why, it just seems that, you know, that's been my experience so far. And so I can only go by what I've experienced so far in, in dealing with, with Mosley and, and like, I'm not questioning their work, I'm not questioning what they do, that they do a good job. But they've been working with us for a long time. And uh, I kind of think that, boy, we need to pinpoint, what are we looking to do? How much are we looking to spend? And then that's what that building needs to be designed around. And that's about the, what Moody was talking about and what we're talking about now. And I'm just being honest, you know, I'm just putting it out there. When I, I do, I build things for a living. I build thirty-five million dollar humongous buildings, I, I build metal buildings, I build small ones all across the country. And cost of material is, is not going up, cost of material has gone down. Cost of labor has gone up. Now, right after COVID, because you couldn't get supplies in twenty, in twenty twenty-one, cost of materials had, had gone up. And we built, and you built a fire station in New Kent when things were at their highest peak in twenty twenty-one, I believe, for about six, six and a half million dollars. So I'm just, I wonder sometimes, and it's, and I just, it's me being, me being frank and me being honest and just saying, I wonder sometimes if the interest of King George are really put at the forefront of what we're trying to do. I know we, we need to build a, a building that is gonna be sustainable and something that we can use. But I also know it needs to be something that we can afford today and that we can make work today. You know, so that's just kind of where I am on the whole thing and and I just wonder, you know, just, my one experience is the maintenance building. You know, and there's other things that I've looked at too that have been brought in and just going, that's, those, some of these numbers are just kind of out of whack for me, so sometimes I want to get more than one opinion on things. And I, I think that we can continue to partner with Mosley, but I think that we should also be looking at architectural firms who might see things a little bit differently, that's just my opinion.
So were they the lowest bidder? Was he the lowest um, RFP? Was he the lowest?
Mr. Chairman, on, on the RFP for professional services, you rate in order of preference you think is most qualified. Then you take the first one you selected, you sit down and negotiate with them on the price. If, if you don't feel that you can reach an, reach an agreement, then you would go to the next uh, propos- I believe, was there five of them, was that, how many? The seven of, okay. Right, and I believe uh, there was a two-point differential between Mosley and the second one. And so I guess, you know, if you don't feel that you can negotiate a satisfactory number that meets your requirements, then the next best thing is, would be to go to the next uh, provider and sit down and do the same thing.
Again, are you online, Mr. Stroud? Is he online?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stroud, do you have a comment on this?
So, I'm not sure if you guys can hear me.
We can hear you now.
I am, sir. I am, can you hear me? I'm talking.
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Stroud.
Yes, sir, I've, I've got a few comments. Um, so first, uh, Mr. Davis did a real good job and settled. I don't know why there's a delay.
Was that all you had, Mr. Stroud?
A lot of the things that I was gonna say.
I'm gonna get on the hot tub.
Yeah, so yeah, so I've got a few things, uh, the, we need to look at there's just a long delay.
Just keep talking, Mr. Stroud.
I am talking. So I think that we should look and at the next company that submitted. Whenever we look at some of the costs that are on the screen right now and whenever we look at the furniture and equipment allowance that two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, I would like to see a detailed breakout. Uh, why did, or how did we come up with a cost of two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars without having a furniture and equipment list? What were the estimates based upon? There's just a lot of details missing in this quote. Additionally, the breakdown of the square foot that the building's based on. I would like to know where the department for ten rooms comes from. How many firefighters are on each ship? We're asking for twice the number of rooms of New Kent.
This stuff. Um, okay, so
So these are some of the questions that I have.
Okay. So, um,
But I believe that we should look at another option and another architectural firm. Because as Mr. Davis Pat has already said, it seems the only one we use
Mr. Stroud, I'm gonna jump in, I, I know you had those questions, you gave them to us when we met with Mosley. Several of us intermittently met with Mosley and, and our staff. And I have the answers for you and I wrote them down, so when you come back, I can share them with you, because we're really having
Mosley Architects.
Hearing you.
Okay, so can you um, get him in the listen-only mode? Because at this point, this has become too taxing for a public meeting. So if we're gonna have a call-in next time, we, we need to make sure our connections, no matter where they're at in the world, are sufficient. Because I don't even, I didn't even hear half of what he said. So, which is a disservice to him and his people he's representing. So anyhow, so who, how many people were on the committee? Yeah, who was that? And so the committee ranked architects. So the, so the committee was the same people that approved the RFP. That seemed a little odd, but anyhow. Everything they wanted or everything that was necessary? Well, I, I had an opportunity to sit in a few minutes with Mosley yesterday afternoon. And the um, the, the price is, is pretty steep for this fire station. It's a fire station. There's only a certain amount of requirements that, there's many fire stations that are built all over the country every day. It's, it's not really rocket science. So I'm not real satisfied with um, a couple of things. One, how we as a county um, put um, folks on a committee that are gonna be the ones provided. They should have a, they should have an input in it, but they shouldn't be the one deciding who's spending the money and to who. That's supposed to be a board of supervisors. Secondly, um, I think that this price, even though it's lower than it was yesterday, lower than it was the day before, is still um, pretty pricey. And I'm satisfied uh, to look for another RFP or send out. Um, but the fire station needs to be built, it needs to be built soon. At a reasonable amount of money. Going back and forth on what we can spend, what, how much money we have, what our priorities are. Um, there's a lot of priorities in King George, you only got a certain amount of money. So, Mr. Solins, do you have comments?
Not about this, but I want to go back to something else in just a moment, so go ahead.
All right, so this is for discussion, so at this point, um, uh, we're not gonna vote on it, but um, what's the will, how we want to proceed with this? Mr. Forman, you got any suggestions?
Well, if the, the board's not satisfied with this proposal, then uh, the proper means would be go to the next proposer who is the next type rated, and I don't recall what their name was. So and and they had significant, they had significant experience designing fire departments.
Yes, they did, very significant.
I mean, that would be your ultimate, rather than putting it out for an RFP again, you know, it's just more costly and time-consuming. So you have the right to go through the list and until you get
You um, um, reengage with Mosley and see if they can sharpen their pencil?
If that's what your directive is, Mr. Smolnik and I could uh, speak with them again, if that's what you're
Well, did Ms. Smol, do you have something you wanna add?
No specific comments, it's, it's, you know, that, that, pretty much uh, the, the comment was if you want to go back to, that's another option. To go back to Mosley to see if they can sharpen their pencil anymore or to, to start working with the uh, the second highest scoring candidate uh, who submitted a uh,
I want to go to the next bidder.
He's awake. Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, no.
So, what he says, there's Solins, you want to go on to the next one?
Yes, I, I think that, that, that uh, we can ask uh, Mosley to sharpen their pencils, but if we go to the next bidder, we may get a better deal. And that'll pretty much guarantee that Mosley gonna sharpen their pencils the next time we ask them for something.
So your will is to move on?
I've been awake.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. First of all, you would have to talk to Mosley first to get them to reduce their, it's not, uh, it's not us getting the other one and playing them off against each other.
I understand that, I'm, it's not a either or, I'm saying, you're, you're done, we're moving on to number two.
Okay.
And then down the road, if we need something from you again, maybe you'll come back with a little bit more resource.
Oh, okay.
Your will is to um, move on?
Yep.
And Mr. Davis?
I concur.
And we have, there's three, Ms. Bender?
No matter what I say, the vote's already there, so.
They are. All righty.
Your opinion still counts, so I'd like to hear it.
I said in that, my only concern is, we've got, and this is something I brought up last year when we were rushing to the end to approve all this stuff. We can wait and think about this, is that we are spending interest on a loan that we're not doing anything with. And that's always my concern. I, my, my concern is how quick this second firm can turn around. And what is a better process to try to get the number we're looking for? Because this was one of my concerns last year, when there was a rush to do everything, is now that, now we're in this position. And we're spending money on a loan and we haven't anything to show for it yet.
So, so for every penny of the tax rate, it's uh, around three twenty, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars? So, so if you got this to a reasonable amount, you could, that'd be one penny less.
Did Ms. Bender vote for the loan?
Keep doing this, if you keep doing this properly, eventually, that, that'll be a substantial difference in the tax rates. So if you, if the board stays on this and continues to be um, uh, mindful of the money they're spending that, that doesn't belong to us and how we're gonna do it, then I think that the folks will come to the county that want to work here or, or do business here as far as their services would come with a sharpened pencil. And I think that Mr. Davis is correct that um, this shit, this pencil here has not been sharpened in a long time.
My only, I just want to make sure that when we go out to the second company, that we give some direction or something, I don't know if we can do that, to, to know where to sharpen the pencil, what's the amount they're hitting, so that we don't spend months and months and months playing
Well, this will be the time where they give us their breakdown, their proposal, and we go through the negotiations like we did with uh, Mosley.
That's fine, I just want a clarification because we want to make sure that this doesn't drag out for years.
So is that part of the water authority chairman, I mean um, manager, or is that a part of the senior advisor job?
That's a good question.
Are you gonna throw that on to Mr. Smolnik?
Uh, he, he's gonna sift on this.
I have a quick question, sir.
We need to start with a better idea of what the requirement is for the six square feet.
So, Mr. Stroud, you need to come back and um, I know you've been spearheading it and come back and, and be in person. And at this point, we have, uh, there's been uh, the board's will is that we will um, work to the next um, folks and then we'll get things worked out from there.
Uh, just a quick question, sir. So, Mr. Sav, is, is it possible for us to come in? talking to an architect about the price that we're shooting for?
Oh, I think, I think we can, uh, the process that I used, when you all conveyed to me the price, and particularly Mr. Stroud had talked to me on several occasions. When I approached Mr. Bell and told him this was the board's basically, um, numbers that they were looking for. And so obviously you needed to cut square footage to get to that number and citing the two fire stations that were visited and so forth. And so that's how we arrived at trying to get this number down from, uh, I think it was one point one million something. And, uh, so we worked our way down from that. And I believe Mr. Stroud had some legitimate questions, uh, which some of those we asked, uh, the, the Kathy asked during the, uh, meeting with them. But, uh, that's how the process worked.
So on this next, um, bidder, or whatever you call them, so there was, there's discussion whether it'll be a three bay or a four bay. Or it'll be a three bay with four bay, uh, an option for a fourth, since we don't have anything to put in a fourth bay. So what, what are you gonna put out? One for three bay, one for three, four?
Well, we would just add them, ask to do an ad alternate like we did for the current folks. And so when the bidders or the contractors would respond, they would give you two options. Then, once you saw the total bid price, then you could decide you wanna go with four bays or the three bays and, uh.
So I would like to get the opinion of the board about, uh, three, four bay. Where, where are we standing on that?
I'll go first. I mean, if a four bay is not an option, because we're thinking about the ladder truck, which we do not have at the moment, is at least to have the three bay with the option for the fourth bay when we have available funds to purchase a ladder truck, so that you plan it ahead of time.
Okay.
I'd like to know the cost for both the three bay and the four bay. I mean, that, that should be part of the proposal. And then we can decide then based on how much it costs. I mean, if we add an additional bay, we, even without a ladder truck, we have equipment that we can put in there and it won't be wasted money. So if we can afford it, I would like to go for it.
So, um, so our impacts, uh, that we have in King George, um, some, uh, the folks that will be having an impact on our services in King George, and one of those impacts would be the, um, fire station. Maybe they could be the ones that pay for that impact, um, if you get where I'm going.
I think so, but not really.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
I concur, Mr. Solins, as far as we should be looking at both options to see, you know, where it's gonna fall as far as price wise go. But even if we did three with the option, you know, later date, we could always add it if it was necessary.
But I think what Chairman Collin was referring to is voluntary profferies to such prospective, uh, businesses that may require the need for a ladder truck to help cover the cost of providing that.
That's, that's what I wanted to say without getting in trouble.
Can I say something real quick? I think, though, for the first, um, bid from them, it would have to be based on the original RFP and then we can negotiate with the changes. Cause they're gonna submit their bid. They're gonna submit their price to me based on the RFP that was in either. So that first bid will be whatever we have out there. And then when we bring them in for negotiations, that's when we can reiterate the changes that the board of supervisors would like to have.
Yes, ma'am.
Have them go back to the table and bring us another figure.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cobb, can you send us the RFP, the original RFP that went out last year?
It's not a problem, I can have, uh, Miss Miller, and that's a Jackie, and for, um, it's a small, it's a little.
I appreciate that, cause then I, I never saw it in the first, so I would like to read it again.
So now, now, I'm sorry, Ms. Bender, for interrupting you. But now that we have a county administrator on board, um, everything's gonna go through him to us and all, all ways like that, instead of, um, the board members.
We just lock them in a closet in Matt's office until they give us the price we want, and then we'll let them out.
That's the old way to do it. Okay, so anyhow, I just, uh, uh, to, to get through that, that, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands how we're gonna operate now that Mr. Smolnik's on board. You all, Dines, you have a question? This is very unusual.
No, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Stroud didn't wanna, he said the lag time was really bad. But when he talk, he said he was talking a long time before we actually heard him, so. Gotta be an internet issue.
When you, when you get a chance to talk to him again, tell him that we have, um, waiting for him to come back and nothing's being done.
Gotcha. He said, he did have one text that he sent. I believe we can get four bays at a much lower cost. Please share that with the board.
Thank you. By proxy from Mr. Dines. Alrighty, let's move on.
Thank you.
You all vote?
We didn't, we did not vote, but do we need to vote?
You're gonna abandon the first provider and go to the second one? I think you'd better do that by resolution since this is a procurement process. And, and I would also advise you, whatever you're gonna do with the second one, you need to give the first one that opportunity. So I don't know what the RFP was, if it was for a four bay or a three bay. But, but you need to treat everybody the same.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's, um, is there a motion?
Do you wanna motion to abandon discussions with the, with the first provider, Mosley Architect, and go to the second provider under the RFP?
That's what this discussion I've heard.
So moved.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alrighty.
Before we move on, um, do you mind?
I don't know, what do you got?
O six oh three and O six oh four, I know those are just discussion items, but looking back, the deadline for O six oh four, for that grant occurs before we meet again. Um, I would like to make a motion that we give Chief Moody the authority to go ahead with the applications for both the FEMA grant as well as the, uh, the DCIP grant, because it does allow us, if he, if he requests it and gets approved, we still get a vote to say, no, we don't want it on the end. So although it wasn't a voting item tonight, I, I requ, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on it anyway so that he can be, meet that deadline.
Was that a formal motion?
It was, indeed.
That'll be a second.
Properly second, discussion. So just one discussion, here we are again. We, we said that we're gonna have, we're gonna follow its Robert's rules. And again, we are not. So the motion with the second, properly, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, alrighty. Secondary public comment, comments will be limited, oh, I'm sorry, county administrator report. We didn't have a county administrator, so we weren't used to it. Oh, tax bills. Ms. Savvy?
Um, I just wanted to update, uh, you, um, I got with Regina and she gave me the final tax book figures. And they're under, uh, tab five. Uh, and basically, uh, you see where the estimated set value, the actual value and the difference in revenue, uh, you'll, these tax will, bills will be generating approximately eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred dollars and forty-nine cents more than what we estimated in the budget. And also, I believe, I guess Jackie, you provide up on the information. Also, uh, your ordinance provides for a second, uh, tax, a supplemental real estate tax that the commissioner prepares in the book as of November first. For example, on, say, January first, I was building a home and only thirty percent of it was built. So thirty percent of the assessment would be on your bill that you would get in June. And then, uh, assuming that your, how home is completed, uh, that remaining percentage would be on the next tax bill that would then, uh, be required to be paid, is it February fifth? Is that when the second, I can't remember what the deadline was in the ordinance. Uh, I think it, I think it's February, I just don't remember the exact, uh, date that, uh, that would be paid. So those numbers I've got from, uh, the commissioner of revenue over the last four years, what was generated in those supplemental payments. So there should, with all the construction that's going on, there should be additional money that's added to this amount. So you're probably looking at least a million dollars more that will be, uh, generated. So this should increase the probability that the portion of the fund balance we use will be less that will actually be used.
Okay, so, um, in that particular budget that we passed, we didn't have, um, the debt, um, mitigation in it. So, um, I would like to entertain with the board that we, um, get back to the debt mitigation program that we were on before. So we can start paying down the a hundred million dollars. So, your, what's your thoughts?
I would like to wait for the year to close to get our actual numbers, you know, June thirtieth, before we make that decision, so we can see the actuals.
So I was talking about the new budget that we have passed. Apparently there'll be, uh, more coming in than originally. But we need to get back to, and then we have to amend the budget. But I'm not saying do that tonight, I'm just saying, do you all wanna start thinking about paying off our bills instead of just leaving them there?
Put it on an agenda for a further discussion with more information.
Next agenda. Smolnik, alright, alrighty, uh, county administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I'm finishing up day two here in King George County. I just wanna thank the, uh, the board, the staff and, and the citizens that I've met for such a warm welcome. Um, it's, it's no surprise, you know, why King George County is, you know, a great place and why you all live here and, and why I live here now and moving my family here. So thank you for that. Um, a couple, I've, I've, I've absorbed a lot over the last two days. Uh, a couple matters for the board. Um, so there are several, as you know, some, several vacancies, human resources, community development, economic development and tourism, and, and, uh, so as far as directors, then now that I'm here, the administration is filled. Um, there are, there's signatory, authorized signatories for these four different departments uh, to sign purchase requisitions and or payment AP control sheets. Um, you know, it'd be my recommendation that I, I can take over these, these requirements. What I wanna do is I wanna give staff clear direction on who they need to come to. Uh, you know, clear, clear and concise communication is paramount to a well-functioning organization. So, so it'd be my recommendation that, that I have the, the signatory, uh, for these, for these four departments for purchase requisitions and AP controls. And the second issue that I wanted to bring up that I've discovered, uh, community development, they're, 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 they're trying their hardest, I know they're very understaffed right now. I'm gonna be, be working with that staff as far as training and, and that's really my background. Um, one thing I know, they've got maybe thirty, forty permits that are writ, that have been submitted, not yet ready to go out, or they're in the approval process, they need somebody to sign for them. So in addition to the, the purchase requisitions and or AP controls for community development, um, just to provide a good service to our citizens, um, request that I work with the staff members down there to review those. Some of them are simpler, once they feel confident, I can sign off on those. And the more complex permits that are in, I can work with them. Once we feel they're, you know, they, they, they pass muster and meet the ordinance, we can sign off on those. I just don't want them sitting any longer. Um, some of them in for, for quite some time, and I wanna make sure our citizens have the service, um, you know, even if we are short-staffed in that department.
Alright, there, there's, sounds like there needs to be two motions, if anybody's interested.
I'm interested, could you read off and then I'll say so moved?
That's, that's not proper, Ms. Bender.
Well, write them down so I can read them in a motion, I don't have them all memorized.
Well, I guess the, the first one would be to authorize the county administrator to be the authorized signatory for, uh, purchase requisitions and or payment AP control sheets for human resources, community development, economic development, tourism and, and administration.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Properly second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, alright, sir.
And then, uh, I guess the second motion would be to authorize the county administrator to be the signatory authority for permits in the community development department.
So moved.
Second.
Properly second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty, so now we're coming to in the end, secondary public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please provide your full name and district when submitting your public comment so that it can be properly included in the public record. Is there anyone here tonight that would, that's in the meeting, would like to give public comment? Nope, is there anybody online, Mr. Dines?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Has anybody received any written correspondence? Alright. We'll close public comment, did you get something? Would you get, you got something?
Something to read. Can everybody hear me?
Public comment?
No, 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 just for the next item.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and go ahead, Ms. Bender, this is for the closed session?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene to close session for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or lit, litigating posture of the public body for the Tyler ERP system contract. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter pursuant, pursuant to section, state code section two point two, three seven one one A seven. I invite the county administrator, interim county attorney, senior assistant to the board of supervisors, director of finance and procurement, and the director of IT as needed because they are deemed necessary and or their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topic to be discussed pursuant to Virginia code section two point two, three seven one two F.
Second.
Properly second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
One, aye, but we have to, Mr. Stroud, if he wants to be part of it, have to sign off and then dial back in in the back.
Just call him on the cell phone.
Yeah, okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Dines?
Mr. Chairman, I have a phone back there that we can call, his cellphone from there.
If he, if we can't do, if this is the same as it was, then he's not gonna, he's not gonna be back there, okay?
Understand.
Alright, thank you, bye-bye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
That is correct. Cellphone.
Alright, is there a motion to return to open session and certify?
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and is certified by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered during the closed meeting and no action was taken on matters discussed in closed session.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
To certify, Mr. Davis?
So certify.
Ms. Bender?
So certify.
Mr. Sullins?
Certify.
And Mr. Stroud?
About five minutes from now he'll certify.
Alrighty, we are now in open session, is there anything, any motions?
Yes, I move that the funds for the Tyler software service agreement be de-obligated.
There's a second?
Second.
Properly second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So certify.
Aye.
Roll call.
That's all we do.
Roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Davis, Ms. Bender?
Aye.
Sullins?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, okay, now we adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I move that, uh, we adjourn until June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, the King George Board Supervisor and King George Service Authority Board of Directors meeting to be held in King George, uh, Parks and Recreation Building located at eight zero seven six Kings Highway, King George, Virginia, two two four eight five at five thirty PM.
Alright, second, properly second, is there any discussion? All those.
Aye.
Uh, do you want to vote on the last motion or is that your vote on the last motion?
Yes.
Alright, so everybody votes to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're adjourned.
Thank you.